All right. We will now call to order the City Council, Regular and Joint City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority Meeting on Tuesday, September 26th. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No update for tonight.
All right. We will now, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Your next item is Business from the Floor, and you have no request to speak under that item.
Okay. So we just move on.
Yep.
All right. Will the Clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, that takes us to scheduled presentations, and your first item this evening is a presentation from the Folsom Tourism and Economic Development Corporation. This will be their quarterly report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Joe Galliardi with Tuce Folsom. We thought we'd take the opportunity at this particular quarterly report to share with you a little bit about the study mission trip that we recently took to Austin, Texas. You might ask, why do we do study missions? This is the 15th year that we have done a study mission trip. We skipped one during COVID, but otherwise, we started in 2008, and every year, we have taken one. The purpose of a study mission is really to gauge, you know, kind of what our city is doing and what other cities are doing, so we can compare ourselves. It's also an opportunity for our leaders to collaborate together. This year, we were pleased to have the Mayor and Council Member Mike Kozlowski along with us, along with Community Development Director Pam Johns and Communications Director Christine Brainard. But also with us was Siri Pulapati, the Council Member from Rancho Cordova, and we had two supervisors from El Dorado County, John Heidel and Wendy Thomas, along with us. But in addition, we have staff people. We had the Economic Development and Tourism Directors from those communities. So as we continue to look at collaborating with those along the corridor, it was great to have all of them in addition to the people that work for the chambers. So it really was, you know, I think this particular year, we hit every subject matter that we could ever have wished to embark upon. To bring back these ideas on economic development and tourism is really incredible. So why did we choose Austin, Texas? So Austin, Texas, what you may or may not know sits on two lakes, similar to Folsom, one passive, one active. One's Lake Austin, the other one is Lady Bird Lake. We also look, because of our partners in El Dorado County, we look to urban and rural connectivity. So we not only look at a larger city, but we also look like a city that's a ways away, similar to how we are, to Sacramento, to a metropolitan area. This particular year, we went to Cedar Park, Texas, as the outbound city, along with Georgetown, Texas, and each one had something that was a little bit different. We had the opportunity in Cedar Park to look at some athletic facilities, similar to what's being proposed south of 50. But, you know, really, it's about, they're a high-tech hub, they're a fast-growing city. All of those things contribute to what makes them an ideal place for us to go and study and see what they do. I will tell you that when we do this, sometimes we come back and say, we're actually doing it better than that particular entity that we're going to visit. But in any case, I think it's really worthwhile. Austin has branded itself, and you'll learn a little bit more as our team presents their portion, but they have used events as a way to brand themselves as a place, as a destination, and I think that's an opportunity for us also. They also took on public-private partnerships to a level that we've never seen here before. So there's a lot to be learned, and you'll hear more about that. In this presentation today, we're going to cover hospitality and tourism programs. We're going to talk about sports and entertainment facilities. We're going to talk about community solutions, and then we're also going to talk about the public and private partnerships. I've asked our Tuce Folsom team here, leading off with Sally Buchanan, who heads up our Visitors Authority, Shannon Robb-Bunellian, who's going to also speak, and then Laura Fickel. So with that, here's Sally.
Hello, Sally.
Everybody, thank you for having us, and bear with me, I am learning that I should have tripled the size of my font on my sheet here. But Joe talked a little bit about studying Austin and our study missions, and what we'll be talking about during this presentation. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the hospitality and tourism programs that we were able to check out while we were there. You know, our study missions are all about studying unique assets and what they could potentially bring, or maybe not bring, to our city. You know, in some cases, we'll see things that are like, oh, my gosh, we need to have that there, or like, oh, we do that better. So that's always good. But, and how the assets and amenities that the city, the community, and the businesses bring, and how those assets create more revenue to the city. And if you ask me, it all starts with tourism. People visit, they fall in love with the city, and they decide they want to move their families here, start their businesses here. And in Austin, in order for them to make a fabulous first impression, they really started with their branding and putting their claim on the areas where they can really shine. And for Austin, it was Keep Austin Weird, and being the live music capital of the world. I was actually looking at that, I was, was it of the country? But no, it was of the world. And they said it, and then they set out to make it happen. And everything they did really encompassed branding in both of those areas. And then their efforts with the city and the business community, and even through public-private partnerships, they began to make this claim a reality. And I thought they did a pretty good job of it. You could really see them bring to life these things in the city, and by the examples that I'm going to talk about in a few minutes. And one great example of this was how they turned a bat problem into a marketing opportunity by creating a sightseeing event of the bats that do their nightly show from the Congress Street Bridge. And we did get the opportunity to go wait at Congress Street. It was really hot, the bats didn't come out, but there were literally hundreds of people out there who frequented the businesses before and after, waiting for that to happen. We got a glimpse of a few, but it is super fun. I've actually been able to experience that before. And keeping it weird is one thing that they did. So they, through the exciting tours that we were able to experience, they continued their branding, the Keep Austin Weird Tour. We were on some funky old school buses. There was someone with a guitar driving us through the city. We stopped at various assets, and the Capitol and a university, and sang songs and wore crazy hats, and they definitely kept that weird there. On each of the study missions, we visit places that have access to water, or that have amenities on water. Obviously, we have two water amenities here in Folsom, and this time, we were able to ride on Capitol Cruise Tour, which was an electric boat. Something like that could be amazing on Lake Natoma with a historical aspect and/or a wildlife aspect. So, and studies have shown, the asset doesn't actually have to have access to the water. If you can just see the water, it's a more desirable asset. So embarking upon the River District Master Plan is an exciting opportunity we all have coming forward. Another tour we had the opportunity to take was the Biker Gang Tour. It was 106 degrees in Austin. This was an electric bike tour, thank goodness. I was really worried that I was going to, like, not be able to do it. But the electric bikes was amazing. They had walkie-talkies, so you could hear what they were talking about. We stopped at different places, and you really didn't even feel like it was 106 degrees. But really, kind of continuing the Keep Austin Weird, we stopped at some cool stops, and this art mural actually was one of the places that we stopped. I think we all know that in Folsom, we're lacking some meeting space, and we, our hotels are mid-level corporate-type chains, and we could really benefit from a conference facility and/or boutique hotel. We had the opportunity to stay at the Austin Proper Hotel that had some great event space, but it also had just such a cool feel, the space and the amenities that they had within it. And it also had a rooftop bar and pool, which patrons could enjoy, and North Italia Restaurant was one of the cool restaurants that we were able to visit in the area. And that was all a part of the Second Street Revitalization, which was a public-private partnership endeavor, which Laura's going to talk about in a minute. We also got to frequent a few great restaurants and entertainment opportunities. Gerro's Taco Bar was in a space that used to be a feed store that was revitalized and really became this cool restaurant with margaritas and just a nice-feeling, fun venue. And then Little Longhorn Saloon, I remember it being an old gas station, but again, a repurposed facility with, they have six days a week of live music, dancing, and some of the funnest chicken bingo that you've ever had the chance to participate in. But just a really unique establishment, probably can only do that in Texas, but just some fun, fun stuff, carrying on the vibe and everything that Austin has to offer. Mozarts was an amazing cafe that was on, coffee shop, I should say, on the water, Lake Austin, and it was actually, it's a zoned commercial area, but 6,000 square feet of space inside and 6,000 outside on the deck. And there were people using that facility, enjoying the food and beverage, and working on the patio from, like, 7:00 in the morning. So great way, great use of space near the water, which doesn't incorporate drinking or alcohol. And then Cork and Barrel was a great small-business restaurant. We had the opportunity to sit outside again, 106 degrees pretty much the whole time we were there. I don't know, you didn't know in Austin, you could stay outside because they had misters that didn't get your hair all soggy, going everywhere. So they didn't let the heat of the summer, the action was still happening all over. So, you know, in Folsom, I think we could take note of that. And then finally, we had the opportunity to see some really cool ways that they incorporated art intentionally, as a part of their placemaking, making efforts and their efforts to create, continue the vibe of the Keep Austin Weird and the Music Capital of the World. So very intentional on their part on how they incorporate all of that. And next, I'm going to hand it over to Shannon.
And just to add a little, Sally, to your comments, was how they are self-proclaimed in many of these, and it was, yeah, we're going to call ourselves the best historic town in California and just live up to it.
And you do it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I get the honor of speaking about sports and entertainment facilities. We, what's one of the things that I hear a lot being out in the community is there's, we need more meeting space, more places, more entertainment, things for families. And so it was really great to visit, have a lot of different opportunities to visit. The first one I want to start with was Austin City Limits. Austin City Limits is Austin-famous. It was a PBS show, it's a PBS show that started actually at the university there, and they really needed a new home. They needed space to grow the show, where they could actually have people witness that watched the show. And they worked with developers when they were redeveloping the second, a block on Second Street. And with the developers, they created a venue for Austin City Limits. It actually became a venue where now that people could watch, watch Austin City Limits perform, but then also bring in other concerts. In addition to that, they had secondary venues within Austin City Limits. So on the down floor where we first originally met, they had an indoor-outdoor feel, where it was a smaller venue that was a, they could have smaller concerts. But then, I actually witnessed on Sunday, the doors opened up to the street, and they actually had church service too, which was really, was a really cool venue that was used for multiple purposes right there in downtown. The HEB Center in Cedar Park. Now Cedar Park is about 30 miles outside of downtown Austin, is very similar in size to Folsom, and they had actually a minor league ice hockey team that played there. But one of the coolest things that I really loved about this venue is it fit about 5,000 people. But they, they have a lot of events there, such as Disney on Ice, rodeos, PBR, that actually would come to the suburbs, and people, because the people in the suburbs didn't always like to drive downtown. And so I saw a lot, we saw a lot of similarities, and I think that same could be applied to Folsom there at the Cedar Park. This next venue was also around Cedar Park. It was a very interesting concept, and it was called the Crossover Athletic Facility. And envision a mall, a large mall, but everything within this mall was sports and athletic-related. They had a, you know, the concept was, a family could go there in the evening, and you could drop your kids off for their dance class, their, you know, maybe their taekwondo class, go to the gym. They had physical therapy. It was all individually businesses within this facility. But then at the center of it, they also had meeting space, so they could have big community events. And then they had a restaurant and a bar, and they had pickleball courts and big-screen TVs, so they could watch football, and they had soccer fields. So it was pretty much all-encompassing draw. They also had church services there on Sundays as well, so they could use the facility on Sundays. So it was very multi-use, very creative use of, I mean, every, a family could go there and pretty much do everything they needed to do in athletics. So it was really interesting to see. Stubbs Barbecue was another venue that we went to. Just like Sally mentioned, it was blazing hot, hotter than our hottest, hotter than the first day of rodeo this year, every day there. But it didn't really matter, because there were fans and misting systems, and we actually sat outside and had a lovely dinner. The cool thing about Stubbs is it definitely accommodated groups, which is something I hear constantly, is we need more venues and a space where group, where we can have group dining. But then they also had a stage for concerts as well. So there'd be concerts going on, as well as the same, there was music happening at the same time when we were having our group dining. So that was really cool, too. Esther Follies was a really fun, we did that after dinner one night. It was theater, but it was, they used local talent, and it was, it was fun. They really utilized current themes that were happening and brought comedy, and it's just another opportunity for that experience, to provide more experiences for people when they come to visit here, or even people that live in Folsom as well. And then this was really fun. We went to a business called Electric Shuffle, and this, basically think shuffleboard, but everything digital and electric. So you don't have to worry about keeping score. You could play as a team. There was lots of opportunities for our teams to play. We broke apart into teams, and they had areas where we could set food out. And we went there for brunch, but it was open from brunch all the way until the evening. It was the perfect activity, I mean, I definitely immediately go, oh, this would be perfect in the Pilates, because it accommodated, it could accommodate date night families as well as groups again. So it was just a very interactive, engaging activity for all ages and all ability levels. And then I'm going to talk briefly on a community solution. This was probably my favorite part of what we did in Austin. I loved everything, but we went into a village called Community First Village, and that was an area for those that were displaced from homes, that were chronically displaced and really needed somewhere to live. And there was 1,200 homes there. They could accommodate 1,200 different people homeless. They had a variety of different housing solutions, but mostly were like, think tiny homes. Some homes had little kitchenettes and bathrooms, but then others, actually, they had shared kitchens, outdoor kitchens, and shared bathrooms. What was surprising to me, how incredibly clean this, clean it was. And it was really, it was definitely made, I think everyone that went on this trip, think about the homeless a little bit differently. It was a true community. It was located right next to a, you know, a single-family home neighborhood, and they really didn't see any crime in the years that they'd been there. And one of the things that really made the community unique, it's all privately funded as well, and they, it's privately funded, and they have sponsors, business sponsors that come in and sponsor different activities. For example, Kendra Scott, who creates jewelry, she created a jewelry-making facility. So the people could actually make items, and they had a store. So at the very end of our tour, most of us were shopping and buying. I bought a bracelet and a pottery, and it was, that's in my home now, but it was all beautiful work done. But the secret sauce that they said was that they actually, you know, they had people, everyone's contributing to their community, whether gardening or, but there's people that choose to live there, that may not be homeless, but they choose to be part of that community, and they're the eyes and the ears that watch the community as well. So they really didn't have a whole lot of, they didn't have any crime problems. They actually reported that the crime, most of the crime that they had was actually from the neighborhood next door, from like teenagers and things, and normal. But they, they, it was very, it was also very, very quiet when we were there. So just opened our eyes to a different way of thinking about homelessness. And one of the other things I wanted to point out about that, that was really cool, is people that move there, they end up living there, and that's where their final resting spot, that they actually have a, they actually have a, they cremate them, and they have, they memorialize them there, and they get a, you know, that they, so it just gives some dignity to that. And it's, he said that anytime somebody passes away, the whole community comes together, and it's just, it was just a really special place to visit.
Shannon, I have a quick question on that one.
Yeah.
Is it a part of the public-private partnership, or it is 100% private-owned?
It's 100% privately funded.
Privately funded.
Yeah, and the person that created it, and whose idea, he was a, he was a real estate investor.
Yeah.
And he, he actually, you know, changed his, him and his wife. They live there now, they're part of that community, and there were several people that have chosen to live in that community. And he said that was truly the secret sauce of that, because they, you know, they're living there and part of, part of the community as well.
That's incredible. Do you know the approximate cost of that unit? Approximate?
I don't. Do you?
To live there?
There was no cost to live there.
You need to construct the...
Oh, I don't know about that. I know they live there. You know, they got their social security or whatever, and that's what they use.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
But there was a lot of business sponsors that would sponsor different elements there, like the garden, or they had the, they, you know, the maker's space. That was all sponsored by, so they had private funding as well.
That's sweet. Thank you.
I'm going to hand it on over to Laura. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Laura Fickel with Economic Development with Tuce Folsom. Just, and piggybacking off of what Shannon said, and I know the real estate developers, they're really, they actually donate, I think it's the same folks that are donating another several hundreds of acres for some, they're donating more land to basically double the size of that project. And I think that really speaks to the need for having, having a champion in the community.
Yeah.
So having that champion paired with deliberate strategic efforts, focused on economic development to generate other revenue streams. And that's where the public-private partnerships came in.
Yeah.
That's something that we really attached, latched on to at this, and we learned that a lot of their parks were third-party managed. And operations and maintenance takes a large burden off of the city for funding and capacity. And then they get to go and innovate and apply for grants and do other things that help them provide, you know, other amenities. They actually, Austin, it was Austin Parks Foundation actually does their own public-private partnerships, and then in turn takes that funding and funds private entities to run things like a train or tours. So it's really, it's a really special partnership and concept that they've embraced and amplified as they've proven the concept over various different opportunities, like Lady Bird Lake, Waterloo Greenway. And they're also maintaining, which I know is a huge expense. And then Austin Parks Foundation also, in one year, was able to track about $530,000 in volunteer hours of maintenance. You think about that cost savings, right?
Yeah.
And it's your building community and everything else. So it's, that was a really important takeaway for us. And then this boardwalk that they were able to create along Lady Bird Lake just demonstrates, just shows beautiful view sheds, and also connects the bike trails around the area. So that was a really inspiring project. Again, the foundation was able to complete 13 projects in one year just through funding. I get the fun part of digging deeper into the economic development aspect. All of these things you heard about, the redevelopment, they're talking about the revitalization of Second Street that we heard about. And that was really important, because there was a public-private partnerships that, without it, the theater, city, the Austin City Limits, North Italia Restaurant, the Boutique Hotel, none of that could have come to fruition without those strategic partnerships and letting the private industry work with the public entities to create some real magic along the corridor. And it's not without, you know, other revenues. So they have the P-bid, right? So they've got the Austin Downtown Alliance, Property Improvement, Property and Business Improvement District, that's assessed on that property tax, and then in turn goes back to keep maintaining and keep revitalizing that corridor. They focus on clean and safe advocacy, planning, placemaking, and research. Those are their main tenets. Another opportunity that they seized, again, declaring it, and then, you know, backfilling, was the Austin Healthcare Council. They identified their assets, they got them together and said, how can we lean into this and, you know, make this this life science biohub? And again, the partnerships, I can't express enough. They used University of Texas, Dell Medical School to partner with, and they created another Innovation District within their downtown alliance to create the seven-story office building, and they're just working with innovators constantly to bring them through their doors and support them and collaborate with them, giving them opportunities to collaborate with each other, too. There's real magic that happens when you provide a place where innovators can go and meet each other. So that was really an important takeaway, and just understanding that we know, we all know the healthcare footprint that we have in the city. And I think it would be a big misstep to not embrace and lean into that and get these folks together and imitate, or create some other opportunities similar to this. With that, I'm handing it back to Joe.
Thank you.
So I think to close this out, it's like, how could this apply to our community, right? So things have already started. Laura mentioned the Healthcare Council. The Folsom Community College has now started the process of bringing our healthcare providers that are looking to come to Folsom to come together. And the whole idea there, when we were in Austin, is that somebody doesn't build something the other person's building when they can share resources, and that they bring them together and talk about how they can work together, even though they're competitors, right? We're blessed that we're going to become a healthcare hub, right? We have all the major healthcare providers. In addition, as we look at the corridor, we have Marshall Hospital up the hill. So that is already in place. It's, I think, next week or the week after that they're pulling that together to bring those healthcare providers together to talk about that. But, you know, we're in the midst of the Central Business District, which has some incredible opportunities, and I think some of the things we saw there could be applied to the Central Business District. Some of the things that we saw on the waterfront could be part of the River District Master Plan. The public-private partnerships, you know, with the advent of the grant that Assemblyman Hoover got for the Johnny Cash Trail, the art being a major piece, we can look at how they did it in Austin and say, wow, that could be applied here. I think one of the things that Mozarts, which was the coffee place that sits right on the water, one of the criticisms about development in the Lake Natoma area is, oh, my God, you're talking about alcohol. And they proved that by having coffee and pastries that sit right there in an environment that everybody enjoys, you can actually have amenities that don't necessarily include alcohol, you know? So they mentioned Stubbs. Really, when I look at Stubbs, I look at our rodeo grounds, what they had really wasn't, it had a building, but it had essentially what we have in the rodeo grounds right next to it. And they had a venue that would facilitate about 2,200 people. And they had a venue that would facilitate about 2,200 people. And so, you know, there's some things that can be applied here, certainly public-private partnerships, how they leverage that to be able to take dollars and make them go farther through these public-private partnerships was, was pretty incredible. I think we took away from a tourism standpoint, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a bus tour, we don't have a boat tour, we don't have a bike tour, you know, and those could be implemented with the right strategies. So I think there was more than enough that we could take away and say, how can we apply it here? So that our lessons learned, we could apply here. I think certainly how they approached homelessness is a bigger picture than just Folsom. That's more of a regional or at least a countywide, but how they approached it in there being that particular Alex Graham or Alan Graham that started that, he was in that picture up there. He's actually on a national tour speaking about how they're doing that. And, and already communities in California have gone there and are looking to do that in their particular region. So I think it's an innovative approach. I think innovation, technology, all that stuff was what they had and that we could walk away and learn. And so I think, I'm excited about being able to implement some of this stuff. And as you can hear, so is our team. So I don't know if Mike, you or Rosario or Pam or Christine has anything to add, but certainly I think there was a lot of takeaways that could be applied to our community. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, maybe I can add just one bit of color. The randomly, I lived in Austin in the eighties and the area around Sixth Street famously is the place where all the bars are and where all the live music is. And everything south of Sixth Street to the river was this former semi-industrial moribund kind of area that didn't have a lot of excitement going on, except for the buildings that immediately faced up on Congress, which is the main drag that you always see the pictures of where you can see the state capital of Texas at the end of the street. And the thing that stood out for me of all of the stuff that we took from, from the Austin trip was that the, the city elected officials at some point in the eighties recognized that they were eventually going to decommission a power plant that was in that area, that was right on the water. And it gave them the opportunity to start cobbling together pieces of property that were in that area so that the city had a land bank because it was underutilized property. And some relatively modest investments, you know, not that long ago, have resulted in what is now a extremely active, well-developed, brand-new, sparkling, interesting, active place that people are dying to get into and build high-rises in. I'm not sure that we want the high-rises or that level of activity, but I think the seed of the, the key idea there is that when we have the opportunity to make bets on the future, we have to be ready to be able to do that. And that requires that we be strategic about the revenue that we have. And our neighbors in Rancho Cordova have placed some big bets on owning, the city owning property that they can later, you know, zone and, and go into partnership with developers on. Where, when those opportunities present themselves to us here in Folsom, we need to make sure we take advantage of. The one that's very obvious is the Corp Yard. That is already city-owned property and it's a magnificent, you know, ground zero for some interesting things that could happen in the future. But when we come across other opportunities to gather in property, we should make sure that we're ready to do that. Thank you.
So just a little feedback on my end that I was really impressed with, with Austin was, so whenever I go on these, I take those 6:00 AM power walks with some of the other people. And on the first day, it was just impressive how they make use of their waterfront that attracts people to it, which to me was really exciting. It was beautiful, but it was the construction that was going on in Austin, the growth. The, there was a lot of, I call it younger people. It was very active. The restaurants were really busy on those nights. And you can tell that Austin had an energy that made it very attractive. When I look at, you know, when I looked at Austin in comparison, let's say to the Sacramento region, there are definitely opportunities when it comes to things by the water that sort of, Sally, what you alluded to is, it's attractive and there's potential for us to make use in terms of economic development and things that would draw people to want to come to Folsom to shop and eat and, and spend money. So if I had known it was going to be 106 degrees, I probably would not have gone. But I'm glad that I did because it was, it was a good trip. It definitely, I came, I always come back from these trips with just ideas that circulate in my mind about, oh my gosh, if we did this, it could be so much better. And, and so thank you, Joe, for the presentation. That was really, Joe and your team, it was good information and it definitely highlights a lot of the interesting things about Austin. And I'm sorry I didn't wear my chicken earrings. Chicken earrings, yeah.
Laura, wow, I thought it is on. Sorry. Thank you again. I know for the last, you know, I think several quarters, you have been presenting some incredible things, what's going on around us and through these tours or visits. Now we have a consultant, I think, on board for the economic development to start with. And that's one of the parts you guys have presented. I really, really want to see, you know, I can come as a resident of the Folsom, not as a council member. I really, really want to see any of those experiences. And, you know, you guys have seen to incorporate on the final report, the economic development consultant is going to present to the city council. Because, you know, we want to take advantage. I know they do, my colleagues has that knowledge, but it has to come to that, like rodeo grounds is, you know, great example, talking about, right? It is three to five days is busy throughout the year, maybe here and there. But rest of the time, it is available for some creative things. So yeah, I'm looking forward and thank you again for, you know, I can call this as, you know, a pub, public-private partnership kind of thing, you know? Thank you.
Sure. All right. Any other comments?
Okay, your next agenda item is item number two, Folsom Plan Area Semi-Annual Report.
Good evening, Pam.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And this is a regular report out that the Community Development Department gives to the City Council and the community about activity, development activity that's occurring within the Folsom Plan Area, specific plan we often refer to as Folsom Ranch. We cover a couple of different topics. So I'll start with planning activity. And thank you, Krista, for getting me up and running. Appreciate that. So the, just a reminder that this, this master-planned community is over 20 years in the making. It was a lot of work getting to the adoption in 2011. And then there were several refinements over time, some minor allowed, you know, kind of through, through staff. And then several more significant changes approved by this council and other councils before you getting to where we're at today. So this is the exhibit showing, you know, 2022 entitlements. And I think one of the things that's pretty obvious, and Steve Cron will talk about this in a little bit, is just the amount of mapping that has been approved and finalized at this point for single-family homes, but also we have, you know, multifamily, medium-density and commercial development as well as, you know, hospital development. And we have some new applications I'll touch on in just a minute. So within the last six-month period is what we're talking about, really from April to September of this year. And in order to give you the data, we accumulated the permit numbers from last week. So there's still a week, but of 55 new single-family home permits in September through last Friday. We have three new applications over that period. One to request consideration about some freeway-oriented signs for some of our larger projects. And that will be going to the Planning Commission over the next quarter. Parcel 61, which is adjacent to the UC Davis site. And they're working on application to further subdivide that property. And then we just recently received an application for Alder Creek Marketplace at the southwest corner of Alder Creek Parkway and East Bidwell, which is intended to provide the first grocery store market to the Folsom Plan Area. So I think residents will certainly be excited about that. Over the last six months, there were six entitlements approved by the Planning Commission. None of them came to the City Council. That's a little unusual if you track the history. A lot of times we have had entitlements that come before you. There've been, you know, final maps and things like that, but no major entitlements that required amendments by the City Council. I'm just going to show you those briefly. Alder Creek Apartments, this is a Spanos project and they got a one-year permit extension. We had Toll Brothers Phase Three, which is the furthest western development within Toll Brothers that had design review approval for that Phase Three project. That is one that is not age-restricted. That's the one area that's not age-restricted. The third entitlement was for design review of Mangini Ranch. Phase Two, this is kind of what you see down the hill as you're coming across East Bidwell and looking up to the left, essentially. This is just beyond the, the Dignity Site. And we have some aerial photos that Steve's going to cover in a little bit that shows you kind of the real-time grading and development activity. Another single-family design review modification, which was adding additional master plans to a smaller subdivision in response to market changes. And then one of the first kind of mixed-use non-residential projects was the South Point Parcel, which is on the northeast corner of East Bidwell and the southeast connector, White Rock Road. And this is a pretty large site, 10 acres with 10 different parcels, including several medical office buildings, some drive-through restaurants, gas station and a couple of retail buildings. And then design review, again, residential, single-family design review for Mangini Ranch Phase One, Three, or One C, which is at Savannah Parkway and White Rock Road. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Cron to talk about both the engineering and building activity. And we've got several new aerial photos courtesy of the landowners that show you kind of real-time activity. So Steve?
Good evening, Steve Cron, City Engineer.
Good evening, Steve.
I'll briefly go through the balance of the slides. And if you have questions, as always, feel free to interject at any time. And there'll be a question and answer at the end if you'd like. And this is kind of a general overview of all the activity that's going out there. This is, looks like it's looking west. And you can see all the items there are, and we'll have little closer pictures of these, these areas from an aerial view throughout the presentation. So this is kind of a general overview of all of the activity going on out there right now. This is a list of our small lot final map activity. We haven't had any final maps approved in this last semi-annual period. They were all approved prior to that time, but we do have five more maps in review right now that are a total of 365 lots pending. Right now, we have a total of just over 4,300 single-family lots that are mapped and would be ready for building permits once the infrastructure is completed in those subdivisions. Here's kind of a general overview of the permit tracking, as Pam mentioned earlier. I think we're just over 3,200 permits for single-family and then about 400 approximately on multifamily units that have been approved for permits and most of the, most of which are under construction and continue under construction. We've averaged really from the beginning of the year, most of the months have been between around 60 permits a month. But June was the end of the bunch of permits that were applied for before January 1st. So we pulled, I think, 140 in, in June and then about 100, which was a surprise in August. But generally, we're about 60 permits a month. Here is an overview of the Mangini Ranch Phase One and One C North subdivision. Vandale Apartments there in the foreground and the bungalows. They're a little farther along than this photo, but they're moving right along. Bungalows, looks like it's ready to pull permits here probably in the next couple of weeks. Mangini Place Apartments in the background as well as the One C South, which is the Lennar Homes. Here are some model homes or construction Vandale Apartments. St. Anton's, which is the Mangini Place Apartments, that's moving right along. And then TriPoint Homes models for One C North and South. Oh, actually just One C North. One C South, as I mentioned, will be Lennar Homes. And I think they just received design review approval. Mangini Ranch Phase Two, this is the location of the fire station that's under construction as well as Alder Creek Elementary and a future park site. Westwood Drive there is open now between Alder Creek Parkway and what was Placerville Road. And that will remain open. And the Shops Project is also moving forward. They're, they're getting close. I think they're about ready to pave their site or finish paving. And they might be looking for occupancy here in this final, in the third or fourth, fourth, probably the fourth quarter of this year. Phase Two Builders, TriPoint Homes doing Eastwood. These are homes, it's a new, new, new builder out there this year and KB as well. This is Mangini Phase Three, that's on the west side of East Bidwell, on the northwest corner of Mangini Parkway and East Bidwell. They're moving right along with a lot of permits. And that's Taylor Morrison, who's the home builder. And there's a look at their models. Alder Creek Parkway, UC Davis is to the right on the photograph. They've, they've started work out there. I'm not sure if they have a permit yet, but they would get the permit from the state, wouldn't be from the city. But I'm assuming that they have a permit to move forward because they're starting underground work and, and moving right along on the site. This is Parcel 85 photo. We haven't seen any activity yet from Dignity Health, but they are finishing the roadway improvements. Mercy Drive, McCarthy Way, those streets have now been paved. Alder Creek Parkway is close to being paved, finished. And they will probably open up fully East Bidwell Street and Alder Creek Parkway is ready to be open as well at the same time. This is Russell Ranch Phase Three in Broadstone. This is right along the freeway and that's moving right along. Broadstone Estates, that's Woodside Homes. They'll, they're trying to get ahead of the weather and try to get their site paved before the weather because it's kind of a tricky site if it gets wet before they get it completed. This is Russell Ranch Phase Two. This is looking west and they're moving right along with. This was formerly the age-restricted site that was changed and modified. And they're pulling permits out there right now and will continue through the next year. These are their models in Russell Ranch Phase Two, Lennar Homes. Here's 3A and 3B that's moving right along as well. Toll Brothers, this is a good view of the overall Toll development. As Pam mentioned, Toll Brothers Phase Three is, we've issued some permits there. That's their, kind of their traditional subdivision. It's not age-restricted. And then Toll Brothers Phase Two, we should have a map coming to council on the 24th, their first map in Phase Two, which is 2A. And that'll be 86 lots of the Regency Project. And these are their models. We've seen these several times before. And the one on the right is actually the models in the Toll's traditional subdivision. We took that picture today and they're not complete yet, but they're, they're getting close.
And that's not age restriction, age restricted?
No, not age, that's correct. Yes. This is the, it's took picture today from the fire station. They've gone vertical. So they're moving right along and there's a rendering of this finished product. Construction progress is moving rapidly on Alder Creek Elementary School. They've started this summer and they're moving quite rapidly through completion. I'm not sure when their schedule shows it opening, but they're moving quickly to build it. Prospector Park, they've, they're doing a lot of grading out there and that's kind of what it looks like right now. And I'm assuming they're moving forward with the next phase in the near future to start with the underground improvements and site improvements on that site. This is kind of an old photo from last spring, but this is the bridge. I think that structure is in now. We'll get that updated photo next time and show you where the sewer line goes across. That sewer line ties into the existing sewer lift station that's out there. And well, that will serve Parcel 61, 77, UC Davis and others. And, well, that will serve Parcel Sixty-One, Seventy-Seven, UC Davis, and other fifth facilities down there west of East Bidwell Street. And that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
I'll just make a comment, because I know this is your very last semi-annual report for the Folsom Plan area.
Yes.
And as the person whose district includes everything south of 50, I just want to personally thank you, Steve. You've made me look a lot smarter than I am by providing me with all kinds of information so that I can answer residents' questions about when is this street going to open, or why is it taking so long for East Bidwell, you know? So thank you very, very much. I really appreciate how responsive you were to, to my questions and also your willingness to engage with residents directly. So we've got some big shoes to fill, but I know I'll have plenty of time to celebrate your retirement going forward, but.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the kind words.
We will miss you.
Thank you.
Steve, I'm seconding that one, whatever the words in us, he said. No changes. Second. Thank you.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is your consent calendar.
Okay.
If nobody wants to pull an item, I will move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Okay. We will now convene the joint meeting for, the joint meeting, council redevelopment, successor agency, public financing authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here.
And we'll go straight to your consent calendar, again with no request to pull any items?
I will move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes.
I love it.
All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Okay, we will adjourn the joint meeting. We'll reconvene the regular city council meeting, and that will take us to council requests for future agenda items.
I have one. I would like for us to bring an item back on the plan for the corp yard and the timeline of the move, and what is it going to take for us now to, as just current state, what is it going to take for us to make that move possible?
Could I just ask that we postpone any sort of discussion about that until the River District organizing, whatever we're calling this, River District Committee? I mean, that's part of what they're going to discuss, so it seems a little premature for the council to be having a conversation.
Is there a, do you think that the River District Committee is going to say, keep the corp yard there? I think we need to, we need to start master planning what the sequence of events. I randomly had a conversation with Marie McKee today and Councilor Rorba. The, the complexity of relocating everything that's at the corp yard is vast, and it would be worthwhile to give the staff some direction ultimately to start.
About relocating or about what's going to be there?
Well, relocating. The public works activity. That's what I'm, is that, am I hearing you correctly?
So Elaine and I had a conversation last week about, about like the potential lease for another business that was looking for a really small space, sort of on the outskirts, can only be in an M2, M2 zoning. And that's when we had the conversation that we haven't even started the environmental, the EIR on it. And so I would love to have a discussion about what is it going to take, what's the plan, what is the timeline? Because we do have a river district that is looking at the entire river district, and the corp yard isn't a river district. And then also, if we're not ready, it's just going to hinder economic development. So I would like to have a conversation about the.
We can bring back an item, and I'm looking at Mr. Akavan to be sure I'm on point here, but yeah, we can talk about the nuts and bolts of what it takes to, you know, move our corp yard and what timing would be appropriate in terms of being sure that we're positioning our staff and our resources in the best position to serve the city. And that kind of depends on rooftops, honestly. So we can, we can bring an informational item on that.
Is it possible to also get an estimate cost?
We probably could come up with a very broad estimate, but there are a lot of variables at this point. But, you know, we can start the process and give you regular updates and refine our cost estimate. I was just going to add, I know at the last meeting, Councilmember Kozlowski asked for a future agenda item to relocate our operations off of the Y property, which is actually relevant to a discussion about the corp yard relocation. So maybe we'll, we'll bundle both of those discussions together into one item.
Yeah, not to beat this one to death, but we, we always are ending up making some investments in the corp yard to, you know, handle the equipment and the activity out there. A significant one that's coming up is an electrical upgrade. And as we're, you know, planning the acquisition of electric vehicles, we've got to make a choice about whether we bite the bullet and do that utility installation at the new location, or if we keep upgrading the soon-to-be, you know, the eventually vacated old location.
Yeah, understood. You know, whether it's, you know, fuel tank upgrades or whatever we're discussing, it always comes up of like, okay, is, would this be portable to the new corp yard? You know, we're always considering that.
Yeah.
So I have a suggestion on that, too, and I don't know if it's, I think it's relevant. But is there, is there a way to look into any kind of federal or state grants that move things like this away from, you know, like the river area to, or Lake Tontoa area, you know, environmentally? I mean, you know, there's probably a zillion ways to look at this.
Yes.
And that would, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Our federal lobbyist kind of always has his eye on things like that for us, but I will mention this to him specifically and also talk to our state lobbyist.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to bring Mayor, I know it's so coincidental, public-private partnership. I know we have been talking for a while, at least either a presentation from the, you know, Alliance team, you know, how it is currently in existence, and where our EMD, Executive Management Team, is looking, yes, we need some, we need some help for various departments. Yes, we have a framework of public-private partnership. That's where I think we, as an elected official, we meet and greet and have a coffees with so many people, builders, business owners. We can at least put this request, hey, we need some help. For example, Sarah and I was talking Castle Park. It's a beautiful park in our town. Do we have enough funds? You know, Kelly probably may not have enough funds. So if we have some ground rules already laid down, and you ask or give us some guidance or tips, then we go and try to sell it for that public-private partnership. Likewise, last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I was at Cal Cities with some of our colleagues in between five o'clock and seven o'clock, you know, there is an hour, hour and a half. I went to the State Capitol Rose Garden. I used to work there before. I was sitting there and doing my computer work, and I felt it one more time again. We have six or nine undeveloped parks. Sarah, you know, you know, we, we both talked also that one. Things like those, I'm, I'm framing it, you know? Bringing the public-private partnership framework with some requests to the council and community where we can do collaboratively.
Vice Mayor Chalamchela, may I ask, are you referring specifically to the Parks and Rec Department? And are you, and then a second question, are you referring specifically to a certain dollar amount of support? Because we have public-private partnerships all over the city, and it, this seems like a very broad topic, so I, it would help to kind of narrow down what we're trying to get to.
The existing policies of a public-private partnership and what we have done in last year, the public-private partnership, what we would like to do next year or the future years, public-private partnership.
Are you meaning like sponsorships of major projects? Like, I, I'm, I'm saying because we have, almost every event we put on, we have, for example, corporations that, you know, in some way subsidize or help us put those events on. That's a public-private partnership. We put on classes where private vendors are engaged to provide those classes. I mean, we could list off hundreds of examples of times where the private sector unites with the public sector, but I think you may be getting it more of like almost an adopt, adopt a large program or a large project kind of situation?
Yes, that is one of them as well, including whatever you are describing. You know, this is how the, the city is working already or getting the public-private partnership. I, I totally, I know about the Community Service Day by and large, because that comes here very frequently. I don't know the majority of the other things going on, for example. And we can, we can promote and, you know, get more, you know, help from the private partnership.
I think private-public partnership is one of those topics that has multiple definitions of what it actually means, so maybe getting a little more clarity about how, how, how it applies to the city of Folsom. Because, you know, I mean, I've heard, I've, we've gone on several study missions where private-public partnership through the Parks and Rec was very profitable for a city because it helped the city, you know, gain some revenue off of maybe, you know, having a name of a park tied to a business that was willing to, you know, provide funding to have their name on it. So I, I'm not sure if, is it, is private-public partnership about that connection? Is that what you're, is that how you're connecting it? Okay.
You're meaning like kind of naming rights and contributing the money to make something happen?
I think it's so broad, like.
That's what, that's, that's my concern a bit.
Can I just suggest that maybe the mayor work with the vice mayor and the city manager to come up with something offline to bring back?
Okay. I, I'm okay with that.
The other, the other thing is, it could even fall under, you know, this new economic development consultant, because it is a revenue generating capability, but, you know, however.
We'll, we'll talk, for sure.
We'll, we'll talk offline. And my other item is, again, I'm going to be probably, you know, talking this, my favorite item about the procurement. We do have a large amount of dollars being spent through the procurement, and for every contract, there is a 10% contingency. For example, we as a city is spending $100 million through the procurement and various, for example, 10 million is being spent not going through the city council, because we are giving ahead the approval for the 10 millions. So we'd like to know how, how the, you know, in general, the contingency is being spent, is the process and the steps and how much we spent on the 10%? For example, our fire station, it's $8.6 million, which is almost $840,000 is a contingency. That's a lot of money. So just some, a good idea, how the 10% contingency is being spent, what are all the checks and balances our staff does? They do, but we don't know. So if we can bring it, that one to the council, because when you accumulate, it's $10 million. If we, we are spending definitely more than $100 million through the procurement process. That's another one.
Do you have?
Any, oh, do you need?
I'm the wrong person to ask, because I'm super familiar with how contingencies work. So I don't need a workshop on that.
I will.
You don't need a workshop on that. You don't need a workshop. Well, education for me is fine, too. You know, it doesn't matter, because, you know, if, if my colleagues knows it, I don't know it. It's a matter of, you know, I represent the, you know, citizens of thing, at least I'm a cube. Right now, I'm not.
I'd be happy to make sure that you're educated on that, and I appreciate that interest.
Yeah, exactly. Because it's a large amount, you know? When you accumulate, it is over $10 million.
Okay. Any other item?
Oh, no.
Vice Mayor? Okay. All right, will the clerk please call the next item?
Next item is city manager reports.
Thank you. The city of Folsom is committed to keeping city streets, sidewalks, parks, trails, and open spaces clean. A new pilot program allows residents to report abandoned shopping carts to our vendor by text, phone, or online 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The carts will be removed within 48 hours of the report. To report an abandoned cart, text or call 800-913-5639, or file a report online. A link is available on our website. E-bikes, e-scooters, motorized bikes, and mopeds are self-propelled, which means their use is governed by the California Vehicle Code. Stay safe and know the rules before you go. Find information about these vehicles and the rules of the road at a dedicated website, which is folsom.ca.us/e-bikes-e-scooters. An improvement project is underway at the Traders Lane parking lot in historic Folsom. The project located along Leadestore Street between Riley and Wool is designed to improve safety, vehicle circulation, aesthetics, and accessibility for community members and visitors. The project is expected to last a few weeks. During the project, the parking stalls nearest the buildings will remain accessible while all other parking stalls and vehicle circulation areas will be closed. Motorized, motorists are encouraged to utilize the parking structure located at the intersection of Leadestore Street and Reading Street, or seek available parking in other public lots within the historic district. The Folsom Public Library can help you meet your college and career goals with free test preparation software. Learning Express is an online college and career preparation program that allows students to take practice exams and learn test-taking strategies for the PSAT, ACT, SAT, AP, and other college and career readiness tests. And that just gave me PTSD remembering my children going through those. The Aquatic Center hosts their 19th Annual Bark and Splash Dog Swim Event from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 7th. The event, the entry fee is $10 per dog, and as always, human companions are free. And finally, just like Snooks Candies, the Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary celebrated their 60th birthday anniversary in October. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Councilmember Aquino?
Just one thing from the Air Quality Management District. Lots of our meetings and trips and all that kind of stuff these days is focused on hydrogen technology and understanding more about that. And so, for example, took a trip to the Port of Long Beach recently, where hydrogen car, you know, fuel cell cars are coming in these big ships, and then they get off, and then there's basically like a gas station, but it's really a hydrogen station that's filling these cars with hydrogen, and, you know, when they go to the dealerships and all that kind of stuff. And so this Thursday at 9:00 is our regular AQMD monthly meeting. We'll take care of a little bit of business, but after that, there's going to be a public workshop on hydrogen technology. So I will be there, but if that's something that interests you, you can attend in person in the board chambers at, down at Sacramento County, or you can watch it on live, I believe, cable channel 14.
And define hydrogen?
Define hydrogen?
The lightest element on the periodic table?
Is that what it is?
But this, this technology is kind of about, you know, as we're doing all that organic waste recycling, right? And it gives off gases and all this kind of stuff, and capturing that and using it to produce hydrogen to fuel these cars, using some of the, the, what would you say, kind of like biomass, you know, the solid things at the wastewater treatment plant, all that kind of stuff.
If you take the methane, that is the, is part of the byproduct of the decay of everything that we throw away, and break it apart, it doesn't become greenhouse gases, and you can use it to burn. And the only thing that gases off when you burn hydrogen is some water vapor.
Okay.
It's the cleanest of clean fuels.
All right. Councilmember Rorba?
Oh, you're jumping all over. So I want, that's okay. That's all right, I'm ready. Just Community Service Day was amazing. I don't think we've had a meeting since then, right? I was able to volunteer with the Folsom Rotary Evening Club, and, I mean, it's always feels good to give back. We painted five rooms in the Powerhouse Ministries, and people put together some furniture and completely revamped their area, so that was really, really fun. It's always good to give back. I wish we could do that a couple times a year. I'm not asking the staff to do that, I'm just saying I wish we could. October 10th is a huge discussion on our homeless situation, so I thank you, Elaine and Mayor, for getting that on the agenda. So anyone that's interested in speaking, I just highly suggest that you write down your comments to keep, you know, under the time limit and to keep emotions down, hopefully. And I, I just, I really hope that we have a very respectful, wide-range discussion about that. October 20, 24th is another big one. We're going to be listening to the staff present on how to go about a sales tax measure. So a couple of big things coming up in October. So I'm very excited about kind of getting into the meat of things that are really important to the city. Surprisingly, the Mayor's Cup was on Friday, which was really fun. It was a perfect weather day. So, but I haven't golfed since last year's Mayor's Club, but our team took the second in the co-ed division, and I had to mention that because I will never get a golfing award ever. And so that made me very happy. So just a little moment that I had that I was, when we got the call, I was very happy about that. So thank you for everyone that volunteered in that. I know there was people that used to work for the city that came and volunteered, remembered us all from last year. I know a lot of the staff played, and a lot of community members and outside of that as well. So it was a great event. Thank you for being a part of it.
All right. Councilmember Kozlowski?
I'll just pile on and say thank you to all the sponsors of that event. It's a fundraiser to help provide some of the funding that's necessary to run the after-school program at our two middle schools here in Folsom called The Cave. So the kids in sixth through eighth grade at both Folsom and Sutter Middle Schools get to go there after school as a place before heading home. get to go there after school as a place before heading home. The SAC Regional Transit Meeting from last night, it would be worthwhile if you're interested in the calculus that goes into deciding when to charge fares and how much to charge as a fare. There was a nice presentation by the staff of, of RT where they did some analysis on what it would mean to go fare-free, which has been kind of on the tips of everybody's tongue within the transportation space for a long time. There have been a whole range of cities across the U.S. who have considered that. Most of them haven't implemented it. There's been a couple of instances where they have. There are a lot of strange unintended consequences when you make traveling by public transportation entirely free. And it would be worthwhile to take a look at that presentation because it, there's actually, there's the loss of the fare itself from the fare box, but there's also additional costs that come along with monitoring, handling it that way. So, just a suggestion to take a look at the recording of the SAC Regional Transit Meeting from last evening. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Challem Chirla?
Good, you know, I want to piggyback to Mike's comments. You know, I was at State Innovations Academy last week and some of them were, maybe they're going to pick the SACOTI or not, a Uber app kind of app be available, Route Thirty-Six bus. Where exactly, how much time it takes to get to that point, that way? I don't have to be waiting and waiting and waiting, sometimes bus cancels. So, technology innovation hub, they're, they're looking into it and I, I, I raised my voice on the SACOTI.
Excellent. That was the other presentation last night is the ongoing plans to consolidate all the various apps that are used by public transportation.
Public transportation.
Users, because there's five different apps depending on which program you utilize. They're trying to consolidate all of that into one.
Awesome.
So, look for that in the coming year or so.
You know, when people say about the Uber and the government transportation, then there is a disconnect, right? So, we got to bridge that one. And last week, we had a Cable Commission meeting. I'm part of that and I'm the chair. The one thing I am trying to put through, my colleagues approved. Can we offer the table, cable coverage and transmission outside those thirteen agencies a part of Cable Commission? City of Folsom is part of that Cable Commission, thirteen agencies. And, you know, the gentleman sitting behind, you know, every day, he sits from an hour before to hour later and he is summarizing everything to release that cable recording, whatever we are doing, to the eighty-four thousand people in Folsom. So, the similar experience, we want to bring it for other programs. We have now a mobile recording unit we bought and we are figuring it out how the price is going to be. So, in case we are having a big event outside the facility, we can still record. So, that's the one new thing is coming up very soon. The other one is Community Service Day, I echo. And Elaine, pass our EMT team, especially Parks and Rec, a big thank you. It's a community coming together and working together and celebrating the success. I do, I did get some of the comments, we wish we could do more often, that's a wish. We'll figure it out how that gets to. Thank you again for everyone involved, especially Tom and Kelly's team. Thank you. And my last comment is, I know I passed the message to Elaine and Mayor also. Marilyn, I was, I missed the, the Mayor's Cup because of the three-day conference at League of Cities. But on Friday morning, when Mayor called, hey, can you, you know, help me there? In fact, I was looking to send a message to Marilyn because I worked with her so many years as a volunteer. I was looking to send her a note, Marilyn, I can't make it this time because I'm going to the Sacramento to attend the League of Cities. Later that day, you know, Elaine told me that she's no longer with us. It was very saddening. She is a very hardworking, always big smile, always in the community. I love my mom race, grew up under her wings. Likewise, I can name so many things. I felt it and I want to communicate the same thing to, you know, all of you. Kelly, you know, pass that, you know, my sincere condolences to their, their family members. Anybody you see them, so, and your team as well. Your team is going to be probably missing her a lot. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Challem Chirla. So, we have the Soapbox Derby in historic District on Saturday, October seventh. That is a really fun activity for young kids. Choose Folsom is hosting their women's conference on Thursday, October fifth. Get your tickets because that event does sell out and they are, they're, they're good every year. One of the things that we get quite a bit is mailbox theft. And one resident had asked me, well, you know, what are we doing about it? And so, it really made me think, what do people do? You know, these are situations where somebody may have a master key and they get into the mailboxes. So, I looked, looked a little bit of information online and found that the United States Postal Service has, where they will send you an email of all the mail you're scheduled to get that day. So, I signed up, you go to the United States Postal Service, go, click on manage, inform delivery and you will actually get a list of all the, the mail that you're scheduled to receive that day. I thought that was really good information. So, if it's something that people can identify, if they don't get certain mail, then maybe something may have happened. And then, so that was it. And then we will close in memory of Marilyn Robitaille, who was a Park and Rec employee for almost twenty years with the city of Folsom. And with that, we will end our meeting at seven forty-six P.M.